It is now 6:00 PM. And I am going to call this meeting to order for the City of Iowa City, June 21st, 2022. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmsen. Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, well, welcome back, councilors, and welcome to everyone that is in the audience in person and also on Zoom. To those that are in person, welcome to your city hall. We're going to go on to items number two through seven, which is the consent calendar. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So move Weiner. Second, Burgess.
Anyone from the public like to discuss any item that is on the consent agenda? And there will be an opportunity for a public comment on any item that is not on our agenda. I imagine you want to speak on a different item that's not on the agenda. Yep, so we'll come back to you. All right, I don't see any hands raised online. Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen. Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passes six to zero with Harmsen being absent. We are on to item number eight, which is community comment. Individuals will be provided with three minutes to speak. The community comment period will end at 7:00 PM. And the mayor does reserve the right to reduce the three minutes that will be allotted based on the number of individuals that desire to speak. At this time, I'm going to ask that when you do step up to the podium to speak, there is a sticker on the back, in the back of the room, that you can pre-write your name and where you reside, but when you come up to the podium here, we're going to ask you to state your name and the city where you reside. And welcome.
Thank you. Amy Kretkowski, Iowa City. I have some written comments. I'm here to express my support for keeping the downtown Robert A. Lee pool open and for making necessary repairs. I'm also here to express my strong opposition to the proposed redesign of the City Park Pool that would eliminate more than half of the existing lap-swimming lanes. I have two main points to make. First is that it's not really clear what evidence actually supports the recommendations that you've heard today regarding the Robert A. Lee Pool. Earlier this month, one of the Robert A. Lee Pool supporters submitted a records request to get information sort of underlying the, what was sent to Barry Dunn, the consulting firm. And the response was, as anticipated, a bit of a data dump of stuff that was, you know, some relevant, some maybe not so relevant. It's not really clear which, if any, of these documents were given to Barry Dunn. There's no correspondence from the city or Parks and Rec to Barry Dunn that would outline the information that was provided. My most, the biggest concern that I think came up in the discussion earlier was about the usage of the Robert A. Lee Pool. And from the information that we got about usage, it's really not clear about the validity of the raw data that was used to determine the usage. The usage of the Mercer Pool was a nice Excel spreadsheet, and it said it was, it was received from pool passes and drop-ins. And the Robert A. Lee Pool, it says it's from security cameras, or they said here that it's from security cameras. It's not really clear which security cameras were, and what they were recording. So it's not entirely clear. I'm a regular lap swimmer there. I can tell you from the times that I go there, there's way more than two people in the lap lane in the times that I've always been there, and I swim there probably about three times a week. There wasn't really an accurate response about, to the question about the number of lifeguards, which was, you know, a little concerning because one of the reasons given for maybe closing the pool was that there weren't enough lifeguards. Another reason was, it said something about it being built on a bomb shelter, and the evidence to support that was a picture of a sign that said fallout shelter, which was kind of humorous. And we're going to submit another request and try to get some clarification on some of this information, but we really would ask that the city council take a closer look at the actual information, if you can get the actual data that was used on.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Oh.
Thank you.
Shoot.
Yes, so anyone else.
Second point.
Yeah, so anyone else.
Okay.
That would like to come up and address a topic that is not on our agenda, please step to the podium.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can someone else talk about City Park Pool, please?
Welcome. Please state your name and where you reside.
My name is Dr. Lim. I am a retired professor from the College of Medicine. I have retired for 15 years already, and I found out that the best way to keep me in shape is to go swimming. I've tried all the swimming pools in the city. The City Pool, outdoor, and Field House, and the Notatorium, all of them, and I eventually came to the conclusion that the Robert A. Lee Pool is the best suitable for me, best suitable for senior citizens. Because it's not, I do lap-swimming, it's not too long, not too short, temperature is just right, it's on the high side, which is good for senior citizens. And it's well utilized and well-kept, so I stick to it because it's just right for me. So I go there three times a week. I hope you will maintain it. It's worth spending the money and effort and time to keep it updated so that it will be useful for the next, at least next 50 years as the senior citizens are increasing in number everywhere, including Iowa City. I think you are doing, you'll be doing a great service to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And then there is a little basket if you don't, aren't perfect. Thank you. Anyone else want to address a topic that's not on our agenda? Please step up.
I actually already put my card in there.
Great, welcome.
Yeah, great to be here, thank you. City Park Pool is 70 years old and.
State your name and where you reside.
Yeah, Jerry Prothrow, Iowa City. Thanks, Bruce. So City Park Pool is 70 years old, and there's just no argument that it needs to be replaced. So I get that. That said, the current pool configuration has served this community amazingly well, past and present. I'm just in awe, really, of the city planners back in 1940-ish that thought of and passed and built that pool. Nine lanes of 50-meter-long course, wide shallow side wings, a diving well that at the same time can accommodate 25-yard lap-swimming. Basically, it's a multi-use, flexible configuration. And, you know, still today, when I walk into City Park Pool on a sunny day, it really just brings a smile to my face. So I guess really a big thank you to Iowa City citizens in 1940 that thought of that and did that pool. In recent years, the number of hours that are available to outdoor lap-swimming have been increased, and a big thank you to Parks and Rec for that. Added some morning hour lap-swim hours, extended the noon hours a little bit. That's super. There is a thriving and expanding swimming community in Iowa City, and a lot of those folks have come to love and depend on City Park Pool for that swimming activity. One of the, one of the frequent conversations on the pool deck this summer has been, so how are we going to do this in three lanes? We're just puzzled, really puzzled by that. So a few words about expanded lap-lane hours. I read the packet, and it said that there's going to be more lap-swim hours at the new design, and I will challenge that. It's true that there won't be 50-meter, but there are 25-meter, or 25 yards all the time that the pool's open currently, City Park Pool. So it gets used hard. There's a lot of lap-swimming going on. The other thing I want to address is that most of us work, or a lot of us work, and when we can swim is morning, noon, and night. Those are always going to be busy times. Three lanes aren't going to cut it during those busy times. So in closing, what I just want to say is that, you know, we get one shot at this. Get one shot at doing this right, and so let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. And people can just come on up, yes? Yep, and you can even stand in line if you desire. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Ann Stapleton from Iowa City. I'd like to follow up with a few of the City Park Pool comments. First of all, the key summary findings are, and this is on page 42, are to retain the City Park Pool's original aesthetics and character. And again, just to follow up the comments just made a minute ago, there are not enough lap-lanes provided in the new pool plan, and that most prefer, who followed up with the findings, the traditional footprint. An important thing to note is that the Parks and Recreation Commission voted to recommend the redesign of the City Park Pool at the council meeting on May 23rd, but the public comment period did not close until June 4th. And the city council, I would like the city council to consider that and think about why this recommendation was made prior to the closure of the public input for that, especially because the recommendation is not in line with key findings and community feedback. One of my primary reasons to be here tonight is because I very much support the Robert A. Lee Pool. I have swum there for 36 years. It is in the heart of Iowa City. It's accessible to all ages and compatible with the city goals of downtown services that promote a walkable urban community. I could speak much longer, I'll try to hold it to three minutes, I mean, three points in the three minutes. First of all, the location itself provides a far more equitable and environmentally sound solution than the proposed closure and transfer of swimmers to Mercer's Aquatic Center. Transportation, too, and parking at RAL is easily accessible, and the downtown location doesn't require bus transfer. Second, proposed renovations are estimated at about half the cost of the renovations at Mercer Aquatic Center, and the Robert A. Lee Pool already provides what people want and currently use, a warm-water facility for activities from toddler play and swim lessons to physical therapy and all sorts of healthy life skills. To follow up the comment about data, I've been keeping track every day I've swum this spring since they cut down hours, and I heard only one or two people are there. That is not true. Yesterday, when I swam, there were 19 people in the pool. The aquaticsized, there were lap-swimmers, there were people in the deep end, and there were people lap-walking in the water. Third, the closure of RAL would affect all aquatics users in Iowa City by limiting opportunities and leading to potential overcrowding at Mercer. There are also many times when Mercer Pool would not even be accessible, such as during high school swim practices and meets. I've been heartened but not surprised by the widespread support for keeping the Robert A. Lee Pool and renovating it. I've been swimming there, as I said, a long time. I've made many close friendships, worked my way through a variety of health challenges, and established a healthy lifetime habit of swimming simply by taking advantage of this wonderful centrally-located facility. So please keep, repair, and renovate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Cassavant in Iowa City.
Welcome.
So there's a lot of my friends here, and I think that, you know, one of the goals of Parks and Rec, you know, is obviously people, you know, fitness of people in the community, but I also think it's building community. And, you know, my, one of my experiences that is, you know, I agree with what I've heard, you know, about the pool and about the number of lanes and that. I just want to kind of remind everybody how much community building goes on at these facilities. And when I started swimming at City Park Pool, you know, I met people that I would have never met any other way. And because of that, we formed a very active community and started an open-water swimming club that is just, it's really remarkable. I mean, I'm not aware of another thing that has happened like that anywhere in the Midwest, and I'm kind of connected in that community. So I just want to, you know, put that out there that there's a lot more that's going on than people just getting in and exercising. I think it's, I'm a grandpa now, too, and when my grandkids come and swim, I definitely was excited when I saw the new design of City Park Pool. So it's not as if, at least for me, I'll speak for me, that I think that this new design is just terrible or something like that. I think there's a lot good there, and I think there's a lot that is responding to things that are wanted by parts of the community, so that's really great. And it just seems to me that the expansion of those three lanes to something a little more realistic, maybe not, not nine, but, you know, something that might not make everybody feel like, oh, well, lap, 50-meter lap-swimming is over for me because I just can't go and share a lane with five or six other people at the same time. I think that really is a challenge for a lot of people, and I don't know how many of you are swimmers, but if you're in a, sharing a lane and circle-swimming, you have to find a lane where you have kind of a compatible pace with the other people. And if you only have three choices, it's going to be tough. So I would just encourage you to see if there's a way to just modify that plan so that we can accommodate the kind of demand that actually exists right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name's George Tresnick. I recently moved back to Iowa City after being absent for a long time, and I saw the big sign at the Robert A. Lee Swim, so I was really looking forward to when that would be reopened. And when it was reopened, I resumed swimming. I'd been swimming in northern Wisconsin, and I underline the comments of the doctor that it's the ideal for people as far as health goes because as far as maintaining A1C, as soon as I started swimming again, well, I had no problem. So I think the consultants, the analysis by consultants on the Robert A. Lee Pool is very, it's debatable at best and seriously flawed at worst. And the, I think that the one thing the council doesn't want to do at a time when there are all kinds of anti-democratic tendencies is to take benefits away from one group of people to give them to another. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. And if you're seated and you're just waiting, just lift up your hand and I can call you up at any point. So we'll go here, we'll go to the next two, and then we'll go to you. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Susan Meliker, and I live on Ridgeway Drive, and I'm a lifelong Iowa City, and I was born and bred here, raised my family here. One thing I really wanted to clear up right now, which was, I found highly offensive, is when Julie said she did not understand where the idea that a bomb shelter was under the Rec Center Pool came from. I'm going to take 30 seconds of my time, and I'm going to play you an excerpt from the May 23rd Parks and Rec Commission meeting where one of those consultants from Barry Dunn said this.
And the pool in this facility is 58 years old, and the pool is built on top of a bomb shelter. So when the pool gets renovated, it's going to be very costly to dig down and repair what needs to be repaired. You guys are look surprised by that. The concrete under this building is at least twice what it would typically be in any other building, which is what we run into with both of our recent renovation projects. So just an interesting fact.
So I wanted to clarify that. I was really insulted by that because it came directly from the consultants from Barry Dunn, and it came from the Parks and Rec Commission meeting on May 23rd. And at that, at that meeting, I mean, there's so much to unpack here, but at that meeting, we were actually, I actually do aquasize. I mean, Iowa City has been a swimming town my whole life. Even Irving Weber swam on the University of Iowa swim team. And, you know, and I, my current water fitness of choice is aquasize, which I do three times a week, twice a week at the Rec Center right now because of my schedule, and once at City Park since it opened for the summer. And there are, you know, at the Parks and Rec meeting in May, we were referred to the aquasizers in the room, the squeaky wheels, okay? And in this survey tonight, we were referred to the special interests, but never were we mentioned in the numbers at the Rec Center, it was only lap-swimmers that they, that Julie referred to. But on every Monday and Wednesday at the Rec Center Pool from 8:15 to 9:00, there are at least 12 to 15 aquasizers, in addition to like probably four or five swimmers. And what's, I've been frustrated with for the last year with the Parks and Rec aquatics program in general is just their lack of management. The front desk asks absolutely no one why they're there, nobody scans in a pass, nobody counts anyone in the pool. So the data that you're being presented with is highly suspect, and to be, to be stand here and be told that she doesn't know where this information came about the bomb shelter, it came directly from that meeting. And so there's a lot of wool being pulled over the eyes here that I really think we need to dive into, and that's where I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Linda Merlino. I'm from Iowa City, and I have been swimming at both City Park, Mercer, and the Downtown Rec Center since 1982. And all three parks are a gem. Last summer, there was a couple visiting from the San Francisco area, and they were just blown away at how nice the City Park Pool was. The design of it, the amenities for it. They're great pools, and to reduce those lap-lanes down to three is just not even bearable. And as other people pointed out, you can't swim with that many people in three lanes. It's just ridiculous. And the downtown pool, Mercer was just closed for how many months? Six months? And the downtown pool was the other alternative, you know? And you can't tell me that, as other people pointed out, that the Mercer Park Pool, being the only pool in town, you know, won't be, won't be available all the time. So I think the downtown pool for proximity to people that can't walk or drive to Mercer is really a disservice to the people of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you come, I'm going to allow this individual to come forth. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Hal Eid. I live in Iowa City. I'm a swimmer. I swim a lot at City Park. I swim at Mercer on the weekends during the academic year. I swim at the university in the early mornings. My observation from those swims in the early mornings, there, you can swim other, either a 25-yard configuration or a 50-meter configuration. 50 meters Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, 25 yards Monday, Wednesday, Friday. There are always more people at the 25-yard. I prefer the 50 by far. There is a population here who needs that 25-yard distance. With the current configuration of the City Park Pool, they can have that sometimes, and sometimes we have 50. The other thing I would, two more things I would like to say. You're all aware that we're going to lose the Field House Pool as well, at least in the university's 10-year plan. So if we lose the Field House and Robert A. Lee, that's pool two lap-swim spots down for our community, and that's, that's a good chunk. The current shape of the City Park Pool in the shallow wings, if we put a zero entry on one side and a lazy river on the other side of that shallow wing, keep the baby pool, keep the diapers separate, please. Then we have almost everything that is in that new plan, and we have a configuration that is flexible, would be usable for a swim meet if sometime in the next 70 years, the City of Iowa City would like to have one of those. And I think it serves a broader part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Brad Gilchrist from Iowa City, and yes, I came to talk about City Park Pool as well. I'm hopeful that design can be, come up with that will still allow eight to nine of the long-course lanes, as well as accommodate the other needs that the city has found that would be good for the city and others. I've been a member of the Iowa City Eels Swim Club, the Masters Team, since 1996, 97, and we've, the group has often rented lanes at City Park Pool during the summer. We, like this summer, we have three lanes, and so it concerns me what will happen if it's just cut down to three lanes, then that means either we'll be there or, and others cut out, or we won't be there and others, so I'm concerned about that. And I would also say that when you cut it down to three lanes like that, it is possible to get a lot of people in three lanes, but, you know, you could have a slow, medium, fast, but that only works if you have an organized swim team that's like doing that. Then you can get a lot of people in doing it. But most often, it's not people doing the same workout. You can have three or four, five, six fast swimmers in the fast lane, but they could all be doing something different. One could be, just be wanting to kick 200 yards and slow up everyone else and cause a back jam, and it just doesn't work well if it's not an organized swim group when you cut it down to three lanes. And I also think that if it is cut down to three lanes, that I think the swimmers, the patrons, will go away. I don't think you will, you will get people swimming because they won't want to try, it makes people anxious when they have to, you know, jump in and try and, and, you know, yeah, sure, there could be a learning curve there, but my experience is that it doesn't work at other pools when people have to share, just coming in cold. So, and as far as Robert A. Lee, you know, I think, I think that it, too, is just a great pool, the location of it downtown for people to access that live downtown or nearby, and, and also, it also accommodates with the water temperature, the warmer temperature that I think is important also for the people that do the water exercises, water aerobics, and even people that swim laps as well. So I just hope you'll, you'll consider those things as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak, y'all. My name's Dan Katalinich, and I'm a lifelong swimmer, including for the Iowa Hawkeyes, but I'm not really here about my athleticism or, or my lap-swimming. I'm really worried about the bigger picture of when we are endeavoring to create a viable, livable downtown area, that we would take a nexus of urban vitality like Robert A. Lee Pool and move it to somewhere else where not as many people are going to have access, and, and it's affordable, it's very accessible. I ride my bike, and I know a lot of people ride their bike to Robert A. Lee because of the central location, and that's something that we would be losing out on, and I think that would be a real shame. We need to repair it. It's, it's a salvageable facility, and I support Robert A. Lee 100%. I call it the tub. Some people find it's too warm, but hey, in the winter, it's really nice. So save the tub. Second, City Park Pool is a gem, and we should not change the layout of the main pool. My wife and I were there last Saturday. There were people using the diving boards. There were people using lap-lanes. There were people playing catch. There were families doing their own swim lessons. There were kids playing games, and we need to have that, that kind of, that kind of joy and that creativity in that big water space is what that pool is all about. And I think the locker rooms are too big, they're outdated. If you've ever been in the locker rooms, you might notice there's very few other people in the locker rooms. There's a lot of space there that could be utilized. I think we really need the zero entry because that is a very, very important modality for getting infants and toddlers used to the water, enjoying the water. for getting infants and toddlers used to the water, enjoying the water, and then being safe in the water. And that's, that's a huge consideration for everybody, and that goes way beyond the lap swimmers and the athletes. So I think there's an adequate opportunity to just change the little pool and the locker room facilities at City Park, and maintain that beautiful main, main swimming pool footprint just as it is, because people love it, and someone else mentioned that visitors come to town, and you take them there, and just with the park, the oak trees, and the water, it's, it's an amazing facility. I've been to a lot of pools in this country and other countries, and that is right up there with the best. But keep it free, keep it spontaneous, and keep it open, and, and stop trying to prescribe behavior with setting up all these little bells and whistles. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. If you're online, if you're online, please raise your hand if you would like to make comments during this time, and in the audience, if you would like to add something new, we'll certainly have you two come forth, but if you wanna add anything new when it refers to the Parks and Rec, please come up. Otherwise, any other item that is not on our agenda, we welcome people to the podium. Welcome.
My name is Mark Cannon. I live in Iowa City. And I guess I'm, I'm in favor of saving RAL pool. I guess a question I just posed to us all is, is there a purpose to be served by public recreation that might be different than private recreation or even the university? I heard some suggestion that we part, we'd consider partnering with the university, and my thoughts on that would be that about five years ago, there was a lot of talk in the pool community, and this was actually city staff, saying that they were attempting to make this into a facility very friendly for arthritis. So I think it was some arthritis foundation mandates. And it was wonderful, you know, the water, well, the water was inconsistently warm because of the needed repairs, but, but there was no other facility you can go to in Iowa City where the water was warm enough that people who have arthritis or, you know, aging could feel comfortable. So the idea of partnering with the university, I would just encourage people to go and, and dip their foot in RAL, and then go down and dip your foot at the university rec center. It, first of all, it's a totally different experience. RAL has a lot of light coming in, the water is warm. The university, when I take my grandchildren down there, I have to sit on the side. It's cold. Not to mention the fact that it's expensive. So right now, I think I'm correct in saying that if you're not a university employee, that you would probably pay in the neighborhood of maybe $500 a year. I don't know, people could correct me on that, I don't wanna give misinformation, but at any rate, it's expensive. The, my pool pass at RAL, I think was 200 and some, I've forgotten, 270 maybe, so let's say approximately half. So public recreation has the potential to reach out to people, I, you know, people that have much less means than I do, and I think that's what we should be doing in public recreation, therefore, this serves a wonderful purpose that nothing else in town that I know does. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Margie Carruth from Iowa City, and I have been participating in aquasize about five times a week since 2015. It has helped keep me physically and mentally fit. I'm here to support keeping Robert A. Lee open. The proposal to close Robert A. Lee is a classic shrink, shift, and shaft scenario. Shrinking the current hours has led to some decreased usage at Robert A. Lee, not because swimmers don't want that pool, but because the proposal and the interim solution is to go to Mercer. But Mercer is not a suitable substitute. It's cold, there are fewer lanes, the deep water end is limited because swim teams and school use and meets. There are other problems shifting to Mercer. It's inconvenient transportation for many. It's not compatible with downtown and university employees who use the pool at lunch and after work. This shift and shrinking means that many Iowa City Robert A. Lee users are getting the shaft. Historical aquasizers who use the pool for evening and afternoon classes are not able to use Mercer as conveniently. Some UI and downtown employees are also impacted by this. There's a demographic of older women who really benefit from deep water aquasize at warmer Robert A. Lee pool. Businesses say it's easier to retain customers than recruit new ones. In summary, I support keeping the Robert A. Lee pool open with expanded hours. Shifting to Mercer does not solve the Robert A. Lee problems, and instead presents more problems. Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm Linda Cannon, and I'm not a great swimmer, but I must say that I go to Robert Lee pool almost every day for exercise, and I love it, and we have very good people who give us exercises we could do, and I just love it. For 30 years, I've been doing that, and it's really very important for me at Robert Lee. However, in this area, we should not, not look at closing a pool, because the population of Iowa City is so great now. When, when Robert A. Lee was built, when I first came to Iowa City in 1962, it was, it was there already. Then this, and the park pool was there. However, now, the population has gone from about 10,000 to close to 100,000, and we have no, no indoor pool that we can really say this is, put the city on the map. And I think rather than close Robert Lee, I think you should improve it and then pass on to get another pool, at least another pool for Iowa City, because here, we have many, many people who use them and enjoy them, and it would be a great improvement in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Judy Hermsen, and I have been a regular patron of all three swimming pools for decades. I live in Iowa City. I lap swim at City Park. I absolutely love it, as do other people here, and I won't, I won't address a lot of what has already been said about the pool, because they've said it well. But one concern I have is that currently, for children to go into the plunge pool, in other words, go off the boards and get into the deepest water, they're given a swim test. I don't see in this configuration where that would happen, that they could give a swim test. And I also, because it's just lap swimming and plunge pool that may be a little deeper, I don't see the opportunity for children to actually swim once they learn how to. In other words, how to get into water that is deeper and test their ability to swim. And then just a couple things about Robert A. Lee, Robert A. Lee, I'm sorry. One of the stated goals for this plan was that the pools be accessible. And Robert A. Lee, of course, is centrally located. For a lot of people who either don't have access to transportation, or they choose to use environmentally friendly means of getting somewhere, to get to Robert A. Lee, they have to take a bus, they have, they take a bus downtown, and then they're here. And if they, if Robert A. Lee is gone, and they want to get to Mercer, they have to take a bus downtown, grab another bus to get whatever goes closest to Mercer, I don't know what that is, before they can get to their goal of swimming. So I think that's everything I have to say. I wanna thank everyone for, who's been involved for giving us a chance to provide feedback at early meetings and through the survey and at this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mandy Kowal, and I, I just wanna give my perspective, because I have a unique perspective. I actually used to coach at the university for 18 years, and during that time, I became a triathlete and started using the city pools on a regular basis, got to know people at Eels, got to just, you know, basically swim at all air, all times of the day. And during this time, and after I left the U, I started a youth development swim program in the city. And I'm able to see like all, I'm either there at 6:00 in the morning, or noon, or 11:00, or 4:00, and I've had a lot of just watching and observing people using the facility. And I've always said in this, in this community, if you are not active, it's your own fault, because there's a lot of opportunity. And what I love about this community is seeing young, and people that are more mature, and people that have arthritis, and people that are super good athletes, this whole breadth of individuals using the facilities. I'm a little jaded when it comes to giving my opinion, because I feel like sometimes at the U, I've given my opinion, and it doesn't seem to matter, but I felt like it was really important to get that perspective of just seeing, I understand and I appreciate the vision to make things better. I get that, and I love that. We gotta keep things growing, we gotta make this community even more attractive than it already is. But one of the things that I'm concerned about with the program is those people that use Robert A. Lee, okay? And I know people are concerned about the warm water. I know they're gonna add a warm water element there, but one of the things I think about is like nine months, we have one pool, or, you know, with different factions, I get that, I'm not that blind. But I'm also the City High Boys and Girls Swim Coach now. So I've seen that, and have camps over there. And so I've seen a lot, just a lot of different factions, and so I ask you to just think about, and I haven't been at every meeting, so I apologize if you've addressed this already, but just closing it, I heard through the grapevine that, you know, the innards of Robert A. Lee are kinda falling apart, and I'm not sure what that is, and I understand it can cost a lot of money. I love the fact that things are affordable for a lot of people in the community, but to think about having one facility for nine months, you know, we don't, we're not in Florida, you know? And I wanna make things better, and I also wanna make things accessible. Change can be hard for a lot of people, but that's something I think we really need to think about, is what's gonna happen? What are the actual numbers when we go down to nine months? What kind of usage do we have? So that's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone is wanting to come up, if you have new information about the Parks and Recs, please come up, and if you're wanting to talk about anything that is not on our regular agenda, we invite you up as well. Welcome.
My name is Mary Hofer. I live in Iowa City. And what I wanna say is that swimming has changed my life. It is a form of exercise that's accessible to so many different kinds of people, and it's really unique in that way, and it's unique in the way that it brings people together. I think other people have mentioned that. You're all there in the same building, but I don't think we all wanna be in the same building in the same lane. So I, somehow, we have to avoid reducing the number of lanes that are available for people to swim in, in this community. This is what makes us who we are, and we're a good, strong, healthy community, and I, I wanna, I wanna preserve the space. Thank you.
Thank you. And, actually, we, you can only address council one, sorry about that. Would anyone else like to make any comments?
I shouldn't talk.
CNN one, no one else? Thank you all for being here, really appreciate you all coming to voice your thoughts with council. All right, we're gonna move on to item number nine, which is planning and zoning matters. And we'll give a little time for the Great Exodus. That sounds so muffled today. Is it this?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Nine A, rezoning south of Lehman Avenue and west of Sycamore Greenway. Ordinance conditionally rezone in approximately 4.7 acres of property located south of Lehman Avenue and west of the Sycamore Greenway from interim development, multifamily residential to north neighborhood public. This is the second consideration. Can I get a motion to, for a second consideration, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? CNN one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed at six to zero with Harmsen absent. Item number nine B is zoning code amendment, various minor code changes. Ordinance amended Title 14, zoning code Title 15, subdivision code and Title 18. Site plan review of the Iowa City Code to clarify requirements and ensure compliance with changes to state law. This is second consideration, and staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Move by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? CNN one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed at six to zero with Harmsen absent. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at six to zero with Harmsen absent. Item number 10, Highway 6 Trail. Resolution approving plans, specifications, and estimate of cost for the construction of the Highway 6 Trail project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. All right, and welcome. We're gonna start with staff.
Joe Walter, senior engineer in the engineering division. Thank you for everyone's time tonight. So we are proposing a approximately eight-tenth a mile trail segment from Fair Meadows Boulevard to Heinz Road along the south rightaway of Highway 6. So if you're familiar with Procter &amp; Gamble would be on the far left end, and you can see some of the major places that we would be going by on the south end there, the corridors, Creekside Market, Bon Air, and the main gate condominiums. So the impetus of this project comes out of the 2017 bicycle master plan. It's a priority for bicycle and pedestrian connectivity on the southeast side of Iowa City. It's a priority infill section, and it addresses a gap in the city's side path network due to the high speeds and volume of vehicular traffic on Highway 6. So this particular snip is out of So this particular snip is out of the planning document, it's entitled Bicycle Network Gaps. And the highlighted area there in red is where our current project is. So all the brown areas are priority gaps to be filled. So this addresses a big piece of that connectivity. As I said, it's approximately eight tenths of a mile of 10-foot wide multi-use paved trail. We'll be doing a lot of storm sewer improvements. It's relatively flat through that area. We'll be adding some storm sewers in and connecting that to existing conveyance. There'll be improved signalization at the intersections and we'll have a lot of connections to sidewalk and transit that are in that area, bus stops. There'll be a connection to the new bus stop that's at the corridors as well as the area there on Lakeside and Frontage Road. And then finally, at the end of completion, we'll be doing, reseating that corridor. The estimated construction costs are $660,000. This is TAP funding agreement through the Iowa Department of Transportation. The agreement was executed in February 2021. Counsel just recently looked at an amendment to that and approved that, which didn't have to do with the funding, but had to do with some of the language in that agreement. It's in, it was roughly envisioned as an 80/20 split and due to many things that we've, we've encountered with COVID, we, the city will be doing, needing to cover a little bit more than the 20%. Schedule, so we're looking at the DOT bid opening next month, which is July 19th, with an award on August 2nd, a late start date in mid-September. We're looking at 81 working days. We're doing this as a working day contract and starting it in the fall because it allows the contractor to have free winter work between the fall '22 and spring '23. This often gets us better bids, allows the contractor to do work outside of those normal times. And with the amount of utility work that we're doing with storm sewers and other things, it'll give them a lot of time to do that work. We're hoping for better bids that way. With the working days, we don't know a definitive completion date. It really depends on weather and what those working days work out to, but likely it'll be the end of the spring seeding window somewhere in May 2023 and spring 2023. Snyder and Associates did design on this and did an excellent job, so we're happy with their design and what they've done so far. My contact information is up there. Any questions for me?
I haven't heard the term free winter work before. That sort of means that they work when they can during the winter?
Yes, exactly. So it's, it's a working day contract, so once the work is suspended in, for the winter season, but you will often get periods of time maybe that there, the, maybe the temperatures raise or there's, there's favorable conditions. So we, we generally don't do permanent paving past November 15th, which is the DOT, which is the DOT cutoff as well. But we've seen good weather in late November and early December and so it gives them an opportunity to do things. We might not be doing permanent paving at that time, we're not be paving the trail, but they could be doing other work that gets them ready to pave in the spring and be ready to, to do that. And so it's, it's often a, a means to get a little more flexibility for the contractor, which often then can maybe attract more bidders or get better, better overall bids. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step to the podium. Seeing no one, I'm going to call, close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Burgess.
Counsel discussion.
It's a nice, a very nice little project, seems to address a whole range of issues along the course of the, the trail and thanks for the presentation.
And while I know this is part of the Bicycle Master Plan, it's just going to do such a world of good for that side of town in the same way that Highway One also has that extended, not shoulder, but trail for all sorts of uses. And I just know that it's going to be really, really welcome on the side of town for a multitude of uses, reasons.
Roll call, please.
Harmsen. Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero with Harmsen absent. Item number 11 is sale of Lot Three and industrial campus. Resolution authorizing conveyance of Lot Three and a portion of Outlet B and Iowa City Industrial Campus, Iowa to Interstate Railroad LLC. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome Wendy Ford.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator and Public Art Coordinator, but today I'm here for an economic development reason. The item before you now is about the sale of a city-owned industrial lot in southeast Iowa City. City staff has negotiated a purchase agreement contingent on council approval, of course, for the sale of Lot Three, which is approximately 24.7 acres, and the east 50 feet of, of Outlet B to Iowa Interstate Railroad for $1.5 million. And I've got a map up here showing Lot Three in the yellow with Lot B next to it, to the northwest. And only a slim portion that goes along the curve there, the railroad rightaway, would be included in this purchase. The lot is, the lot is adjacent to the main tracks and connecting rail spur that the city installed in the years after it was purchased. The city has marketed the larger industrial campus since night, since 20, since 2008 and to date has sold one other lot in the area, and that was to Alexander Lumber, now RP Lumber. We sold that in 2018. Iowa Interstate is interested in this lot because of the adjacency of the spur to the main line and the available property that we have. They plan to build a transload facility that will facilitate the transfer of goods and commodities between modes of transportation, primarily between trucks and trains. So if it comes in by train, it might go out by truck. If it comes in by truck, it might go out by train. The State Department of Transportation did a study in 2016 that highlighted the demand for more transloading facilities, which support Iowa businesses, save fuel and, and can optimize travel routes. Staff believes the transloading facility represents a key investment in our industrial sector that will also support existing local businesses as well as attract new industry. So we recommend that this sale go through.
Thank you. Any questions for Wendy? Thanks. All right. We, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Welcome.
Good evening. Tom Banta, on behalf of Iowa City Area Development Group. And we just want to hear, we are here to offer support for this. We agree with the city staff's recommendation and believe this will help us to promote and market not only the additional lots in that space, but generally the region to industrial partners, both, and as well as agricultural companies.
Great, thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Weiner.
Counsel discussion.
The city's had this parcel for sale for some time. I thought it was a long time and then to see the date of 2008, that's quite a while and, and we've been seeking a prospective buyer all that time and trying to find a good fit for it and had a few nibbles on it. So I was very happy to see this. I have to admit, I, I knew very little about a transload facility, but it sounds like an excellent idea and something that's much needed in the area. Apparently there's one in Newton, but that's quite a ways away and, and so it sounds like a really good, good thing and, and I, I'm in favor of it.
Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Motion passes six to zero with Harmsen absent. Item number 12 is approval of the Fiscal Year 23 Annual Action Plan. Resolution adopting Iowa City's Fiscal Year 23 Annual Action Plan, which is a subpart of Iowa City's 2021 through 2025 Consolidated Plan. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Alter.
All right, and welcome Erica.
Hello, Erica Kubley with Neighborhood Services. The annual action plan outlines how we are going to spend CDBG and home funding in the upcoming fiscal year to meet the goals and priorities in City Steps 2025, which is our five-year consolidated plan. This is the third year of our five-year plan. We've been allocated $730,874 in CDBG funds, which is just slightly less than last year. We've also been allocated nearly $525,000 in home funds, which is an increase of about $30,000 from last year. This slide shows CDBG and home funding over the past 25 years in actual dollars with CDBG, CDBG at the bottom and home stacked on top. You can see we're receiving a similar amount of funding to what we received about 15 years ago. I also have a slide with the same information adjusted for inflation. It shows how our funding has decreased over the years. This is Exhibit B from our annual action plan, showing how we spent, how we plan to spend our CDBG and home funds and how many people we will assist with these projects. So we'll kind of go through those. We can use up to 15% of our CDBG allocation for public services. We allocate this funding to our aid to agencies program along with general fund dollars. Public facility projects are part of the competitive funding process. Funds have been allocated to DVIP for construction of their new shelter and free medical clinic for some improvements on the lower level of their facility in Towncrest. Neighborhood and area benefits is typically a city project where we work with parks or public works to serve a low-income area. Housing rehab funding is a set aside and the program's administered by city staff. The competitive funding process also funded rental acquisition projects for inside-out reentry and housing fellowship. As a certified CHODO or Community Housing Development Organization, the housing fellowship is also eligible for operational funding through home and a reserve project, which we fund outside of the competitive process. So you'll see both of those on here. We set aside $50,000 under economic development, which we use for technical assistance grants. And then we have, we are able to use up to 20% of CDBG and 10% of home for administration, which goes towards staff costs. And this is our action plan timeline. We are just ending our 30-day public comment period today. To my knowledge, we haven't received any additional comments. HCDC recommended approval of the plan at their May 19th meeting and we have 60 days to submit the annual action plan from when we got our allocation, which ends up being July 12th this year. It's a little late this year because we received our allocations a little late from HUD. And then our fiscal year begins on July 1st, 2021. We can begin projects once our action plan is approved. That's all I have.
Great. Any questions? Yeah?
Erica, can you tell me a little bit more about the Neighborhood Improvement Program? Have you identified a neighborhood and what that plan would be? I'm just curious.
I don't believe we have a project identified for FY23, but in the past, we, we've done a lot of parks projects, so it could be playground equipment. I believe, done a lot of projects at Weatherby, we've done the trails, we've done the shelter. So as, if the park is located in a low-income area, we can use funds for that, for that project.
But that doesn't go through HCDC?
No, it's a set aside.
Okay, okay, thanks.
We've also used those funds for additional accessibility improvements. We've done curb cut projects with those, but as Erica mentioned, you have to target those in low to moderate income census tract areas. So it's, it's generally staff between Neighborhood Development Services, Parks and Public Works that come together and identify the, the potential uses for those funds on an annual basis.
All right, no other questions for you? All right. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one, counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Taylor. Yes.
Motion passes six to zero with Harmsen absent. We are moving on to item number 13, which is Fiscal Year 23 Aid to Agencies. This is a resolution allocating human service aid to agencies funding for Fiscal Year 2023, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Weiner.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Burgess.
Thank you.
Arm wrestling over there. All right, and we're going to welcome Erica once again.
All right, so this agenda item is approving awards for our FY23 aid to agencies allocation. We have allocated $705,433 to 18 legacy agencies. We're currently operating on a two-year funding cycle and this year is a carryover year, which means we didn't hold a competitive funding round, but instead have prorated awards for agencies who received funding last year based on the FY23 budget. This table shows the amount that each agency will receive in FY23 and it'll be paid out in four even quarterly payments. Agencies are required to report quarterly on their accomplishments for this funding. In the upcoming year, we'll hold a competitive funding round for FY24 funding. And so the bulk of aid to agency funding goes to legacy agencies, however, up to 5% of the budget can go towards emerging agencies, which are typically newer or less established agencies, but anyone who is not a legacy is eligible to apply for emerging funds. Agencies can receive a minimum of $5,000 up to $15,000. This year, we received three applications for FY23 projects from Houses and Homes, Naomi Johnson County and Healthy Kids School, School-based Clinics. HCDC recommended funding all three projects, which is within our 5% budget for emerging agencies.
All right, any questions?
Erica, do you have any idea why there were so few emerging applications?
I'm not sure. It could be other funding sources available related to COVID or we, we see agencies have a lot of staffing issues, so that might play a part as well.
Thank you.
If I'm not wrong, also, we haven't, like maximum, since the emerging agencies designation was maybe five, six, seven? I mean, it was never even in double digits for...
Yeah, it's, it's not really out of the ordinary to just have a handful of projects for this funding.
Interesting, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Erica? Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Please state your name and where you reside and there's also a sign in right there.
Okay. My name's Marguerite Oding. I'm a pediatrician, I live in Iowa City, and I'm the Medical Director for Healthy Kids Clinic. And just wanted to let you know, we're really excited about the opportunity to be, hopefully, an emergent agency that gets funded. In addition to needing the money to serve more kids who are uninsured kids and kids from underserved groups, minority groups, and for the most part. The funding from the city, we can use to leverage, to get more support from the University of Iowa as well. They currently pay my salary while I work in the clinic. It's part of my actual job at the university is to serve this clinic. But in order to get any more time, they wanted to see the county and the city actually support this endeavor as well. So it's a, not only what you give us, but we can leverage that into more funding. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, counsel discussion.
What, what was just said strikes me as one of the things that, that, that we talk about sometimes, how, how to be able to, how, how dollars from us or some, or another organization can leverage additional dollars. So it's really a win-win in many ways.
Yeah, it's really a, a good model and can be applied in so many different areas of what we do.
All right. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Taylor. Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero with Harmsen absent. Item 14 is City Steps 2025 Amendment Number Two. This is a resolution approving Amendment Number Two to the Iowa City Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Years 2021 through 2025.
to the Iowa City Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Years 2021 through 2025. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Taylor.
All right, and we're going to go to Erica back-to-back once again.
So this item is also related to aid to agencies. Legacy agencies who are eligible to apply for city aid to agency funds are identified in City Steps 2025. This was something new that we added in 2019 as part of the current five-year plan in order to restore aid to agencies as an ongoing, stable funding source for local service providers. Our intention was that we would have an opportunity to reevaluate the list of agencies with each new five-year plan. Currently, there are 19 eligible agencies, which are listed on this slide. I will note that Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County is a legacy agency, but did not apply in the most recent fund round because they receive administrative funding through the city's Affordable Housing Fund. So this past fall, we received a request from Center for Worker Justice to be added as a legacy agency. Since this was the first request of this nature, we took it to HCDC to determine how to proceed. HCDC developed a process for reviewing applications outside of the five-year City Steps planning process. Rather than just looking at the requests from Center for Worker Justice, they determined it would be fair to give each of the previously awarded emerging agencies an opportunity to apply for legacy status. And so there were five agencies that met this criteria and all five applied for legacy status. At their January meeting, HCDC discussed the submissions and recommended that Center for Worker Justice, Dream City, and Houses into Home become eligible legacy agencies. Two other agencies were not recommended for legacy status, successful living and unlimited abilities. The discussion for each agency at HCDC revolved around services provided, such as whether they meet City Steps priorities, whether they are duplicative of other funded agencies, how many years they've been established, and a review of their financial submissions. The two agencies that were not recommended for funding were excluded based on their status as housing providers and their ability to get an administrative fee from other funding sources, such as through the home-funded projects. If approved, new agencies would be eligible for funding beginning in FY24. This amendment doesn't commit any funds to the new agencies, but rather allows them to compete for the Iowa City Aid to Agency Funds in the upcoming FY24 application process, which will start later this summer, and funds would be available next July, in July 2023. The funding minimum for this program is $15,000. When reviewing the applications with HCDC, staff provided an estimate of how additional agencies will impact funding for the current legacy agencies. If three additional agencies receive the minimum funding amount, the minimum amount of funding in FY24, it's estimated that current legacy agencies could see a decrease of about 4% in FY24. This is based on the assumption that the city would provide a 3% budget increase in FY24 for aid to agencies and that the new agencies would only receive the minimum funding of $15,000. However, they could apply for as much as they desired. We can't account for the amount of funds that legacy agencies may request in FY24, so this is just a potential scenario where existing agencies may see their funding decrease as a result of adding more to the pool. And then HCDC has discussed several times at their meeting that they're interested in requesting an increased budget for aid to agencies in FY24. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Erica?
I just have a couple procedural questions based on reviewing the minutes. You'd mentioned that in January, they reviewed the applicants. I know there was some discussion of how the consolidated plan had said, here's the list. This is set for five years, that's why we're doing an amendment, right? To amend the list. Did they land on, or do you have a recommendation for how frequently then the possibility of revising that list or opening up that application would occur?
Yeah, I believe what they landed on was every two years. And so in the upcoming two years, we'll be revising our plan again. So I think we'll hit the new planning process for the next time.
And did they land on a number of years as far as a minimum for the existence of the organization?
I don't believe so. That varied quite a bit among the members, and I don't believe they landed on a specific year. However, I know they're each considering that in their recommendations.
Is it fair to say that the only, like, I guess, for lack of a better word, strict criteria would be the had-received emerging grant previously?
Yeah, there is, that's correct. There was consideration of agencies kind of following the process where they would apply to emerging, and then HCDC wanted to see there be a pipeline to how they could become legacy agencies. So that's kind of what they're trying to develop.
Okay. There was some discussion, too, that I think at least one member of HCDC thought that there'd been like a much larger list of legacy agencies before, but I don't think that that was the case. Do you know where that discussion came from?
I'm not sure that, I mean, we've funded additional agencies in the past because the legacy list is new as of FY21. So we've had a longer list of agencies historically that we funded.
Okay, all right, just that legacy designation is since 2019?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
They had to have gotten funding within a certain amount. Like, if they were dormant, then they didn't make the legacy list. That was sort of how it got cut down.
Okay.
If I remember correctly. Sorry.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? And there is a sign-in, please state your name and where you reside.
I'm Karen Fox, I live in Iowa City.
Welcome.
I'm a member of the Finance Committee for the Center for Worker Justice. I just want to say that we're excited that you're even considering allowing us to apply for this funding in the future. We have been receiving emergent funding in the past years, but I can't remember exactly how many. But this is going to be important for us because what we offer to the city, to the community, is protection for low-wage earners. And they come to us for many different reasons, including wage theft, help with applications, help with registering for voting, medical assistance on the free medical clinic, and many other things. So I'm hoping that this just goes forward, and I thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? I see no hands raised online. All right, council discussion?
I really like that there's a path for agencies that are proving their value in the community and, most importantly, for residents who need these various services. It's pretty bold to create this pipeline, if you will, especially knowing that there's a lot of complexity to it in terms of budget. And considerations of, as it came out in the minutes, you know, sort of where home base is, who are the residents that are being served? Is it just in Iowa City, or is it neighboring communities? And I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness of what HCDC talked about and some of the things that were brought up. I just want to sort of bring out for our consideration, and perhaps it's not for this agenda item, but for future discussion. One of them being, as HCDC has already indicated, looking at what that means for the budget moving forward. I hate the idea of agencies having to compete, and yet that has been the reality, as they have told us for many years. If we can try and lessen that burden some by incrementalizing the budget to recognize that they're providing services that the city cannot, and perhaps should not, are not best equipped to do directly. I think that this is a really positive step. So I hope that we can have conversations about the budget when we get closer to having to revisit that, even knowing that we're going into a difficult budget season for the next couple of years. The other thing, actually, that's related to this is that there was conversation and discussion, particularly about Houses into Homes. And I use them only as an exemplar because they're based in Coralville, but they are serving, you know, proportionally North Liberty, Coralville, Iowa City. And I think, to my way of thinking, very rightfully so, they landed on, it's about who are they helping, not where is their home base, right? And I firmly believe in that. We've seen additionally through some of the ARPA requests of CWJ about being able to go to the different municipalities to say proportionately, we are serving folks in your area, but it's about maybe 15% of our clientele list. I'm spinning this out a bit, but I know HCDC discussed it as well to have sort of proportionate buy-in by different municipalities. And I know that this has been something that has been raised by councillors before me. And I just think that, especially in this time where we are trying to be stronger and better together, I think that this possibly is a good conversation to revisit with our fellow municipalities about, we really, Iowa City is... I'm trying to think of the right words. Iowa City kind of...
Carrying more than our weight, right?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, I like it. I was working hard to be diplomatic, but yeah, here's the deal. We're carrying a lot of budgetary considerations for what is, truly, these are regional agencies. And so I think it would be good for us to revisit the conversation about getting North Liberty, Coralville, and other areas involved to help with this, because they're doing good work. These agencies are doing good work throughout many communities. Thank you for helping me streamline that. So those are the two things I wanted to bring up.
Great.
I also just wanted to highlight something that was discussed at the commission and the conversation of, like, diluting the pot. And that was something that we've talked, just touched on before when we look at these competitive rounds of funding and the fact that we know HCDC will be requesting more money to, because there'll be more legacy agencies, and that is the issue of contracting for services rather than having nonprofits have to compete, you know, for a particular grant for a particular thing and all of the administrative burden that comes with that. So I hope that we continue to look at that.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I'd just like to mention how the city's going, the city staff will approach budget next year. And of course, you'll have an opportunity, we usually do a budget session in September to get your early priorities. But based on past conversations with council, we are aiming to increase the aid to agency budget 3%, as Erica indicated. Anything different from that, we'll need your direction to do so. I do caution you now, and I'll caution you again. I think last year, across the general fund, our departments experienced, I want to say like a percent and a half to 2% growth was our average. And we think next year will be a little bit tougher. So I don't know that even our operating departments will hit 3% for a couple of years in a row. And there's definitely some stress as you look to potentially expand this budget. Just know that those same stresses are on your municipal operations as well.
All right, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed at six to zero with Harmsen absent. We're on to item number 15, which is Property Cleanup Assessments. Resolution adopted an assessment schedule of court-ordered nuisance abatement charges and directing the city clerk to certify the same to the Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Burgess.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step to the podium. Seeing no one, council discussion? Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 16.
Six, zero, sorry, with Harmsen absent.
Did I say seven, zero? Automatic, six, zero, with Harmsen absent. I did say Harmsen absent, though, right? Yeah, interesting. All right, item number 16, Announcement of Vacancies New. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through December 31, 2023. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 26, 2022.
May...
Would we be out of line to mention now, or you can mention later, about why there's a vacancy on that?
Yes.
Are you planning to do that later, about Amy, or the board member?
You can do that if you like.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that, on a very sad note, that we received notice that the member of Board of Adjustment, the reason there is a vacancy on there was that Amy Pretorius, who'd been an excellent member on that board, excellent attendance and a very productive member, had passed away just recently. And so that was very sad, and our thoughts are with her family.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no.
If I can add on, she lives husband and a very young son. And the memorial service is tomorrow morning. And I believe the clerk, no, I can't recall where it is. It may be out at Cedar, somewhere else. But in any event, you can find the information on lincing.
Yeah, and Amy had been serving her first five years' term that began in January of 2019. So certainly condolences to the family of Amy. On to item number 17, is Announcement of Vacancies Previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Climate Action Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 5, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Public Art Advisory Committee, art or design professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Committee, art or design professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number 18, which is City Council Information. And I will remind city council that we will return back to our work session after we're done here.
So my only information has to do with my used-to-be favorite topic, COVID. Still with us, we're still at high transmission rate. However, vaccines are finally available for everyone. So six months to, you know, to just under, just under five years. They're difficult to find right now, as has been the case every time. I mean, honestly, I would have thought that folks would have organized themselves in advance. But they are here, you will, if they're... It's really been the big gap in vaccinations. Johnson County is highly vaccinated, so I expect parents will, guardians will step up here as well. But it's great news.
I wanted to say to everyone in the public and also to this council, thanks to everyone that was involved with the Juneteenth celebrations, as well as Pride celebrations over the past week. It's been, it was awesome and amazing. And I'll tell you that where my gratitude comes is not only for the support and the love that was shown, but actually for the presence, people showing up. So I want to just express gratitude there.
They were fabulous events.
They really were, and thank you to our mayor for picking up trash past 10:00 PM after the Juneteenth celebration. You show up.
Yes, and you too, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number 19, Reports on Items from City Staff. City Manager's Office?
Nothing tonight.
City Attorney?
Nothing for me, thank you.
City Clerk? All right, we're on to item number 20. Can I get adjournment? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Burgess.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned back to our work session.